Monday, January 9th, then we do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Do, I just wanted to let the board and the community know that we are adding an action item to tonight's meeting. We are going, we have to approve our audit that we saw earlier. And so I am, do I, we're going to be adding that to tonight's action items. So do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the action item added, which is approving the 2023, or sorry, the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2022? Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda with the added action item of audited financial statements for fiscal year 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Tonight's agenda is approved. We, Dr. Stanley, would you quickly review the agenda for us?
Absolutely. Thanks Chair Ellenberg. So we have discussion tonight on a few different things, including school board elections, student travel, we have policy review. We are bringing the portrait of a well-rounded Edina graduate to action. We have some information around secondary new courses for approval, information from Legislative Action Committee, EVP, and then really excited that Director Saylor is bringing proposed collective bargaining agreement with our transportation department. We have some other policies to bring, oh, I'm sorry, calendar proposals and then other policies to bring forward.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. We do not have an official excellence in action tonight. However, since we don't have an official excellence in action tonight, I wanted to take one moment to extend the board's appreciation for our administrators and all the work that they've done because they rarely get accolades and are some unsung warriors doing lots and lots of excellent work behind the scenes. So let's give a round of applause to our administrators.[494.62][494.62][applause] And that includes you, Dr. Stanley, so you weren't supposed to clap. You were supposed to get the clap. So, thank you all very much for all the outstanding work that you've been doing in guiding our district. It's very much appreciated. We are going to move on to hearing for members of the public pursuant to Board Policy 206. We ask that you not duplicate information that has been previously presented. If you have a complaint about individual employees, board members, or students in the district, please direct any of these comments to the appropriate site administrator, the superintendent, or submit them in writing to the board. The board typically does not respond to or have discussion on any items presented, but questions raised during presentations will receive follow-up as directed by the board. I'd like to remind all speakers, your presentations are limited to three minutes, which you will see on the clock up there. So please finish up at three minutes. Our first community member that is going to speak to us is Owen Michelson.
You see, the war is for union domination in the district, and you all have won. Let me give you some points about this. You're in a role. The last three elections, the union endorsed candidates have entirely won, 2019, 2021, and 2022. In 2017, the only, all three union endorsed candidates won. One didn't, and that was me, and that was in part because the union made a mistake and endorsed five candidates for four openings, and I snuck by Dave Goldstein. Now, in that election, I won three precincts outright. I got second in two. Linda Friedy carried those five precincts two years later. And two other conservative candidates lost, which is very demoralizing for a lot of conservatives. Many left, which is evident by the election of 2020 in the congressional election, where Kendall Qualls lost all five of those precincts. Fast forward one year later, in the 2020 election, I didn't even place in four of those precincts, not first, not second, not third, not fourth. Was that because of the low turnout? Possibly. It's 20%. But I don't think so, because based off of what happened last fall, the union endorsed candidate won by 10 points in an on-cycle election. And most startling was a solid conservative Senate candidate, lost by a whopping 29% in the Edina precincts. Never say never, but it's going to be very hard for conservatives, for non-union endorsed candidates to win in Edina anymore. Given that, the trouble and expense of maintaining off-cycle elections, to my mind, to preserve the union advantage, is kind of horse and buggy. Now, I'm going to tell you guys something. All seven of you are union endorsed, and you're a little bit shy about talking about it. Right from where I'm sitting, in October of 2019, four of you were asked whether you had the union endorsement, and all four of you said no. By the end of the week, you had taken the union endorsement. Kind of tricky. Candidate world can see this on timestamp 25 minutes on the PLC YouTube. I enjoy seeing your faces here. It's fun to be back. But it's kind of a bummer for me to watch you spend hours
Can you wrap up?
In public meetings. Oops. You know what? You don't need to have, what I'm saying here is the union, this is a union district, and the favor is in your, is in your court. We don't need to spend the money or the time and effort. I hate to see you guys put all that time and effort. Thank you for letting me speak. Just a second more, Erica.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah Hermada.
Hello, I'm Sarah Hermada. In the spring of 2017, I came before this board and requested that Edina schools design an initiative to address the 20% of students with traits of dyslexia. Despite Minnesota putting the word dyslexia into the, into reading statute in 2015, Edina Public Schools choose to not use the word or specific methods to help dyslexic students. The third grade students from 2017 have spent the last six years using the balanced literacy techniques that they were taught. Use the first letter, pictures, context, and guess or skip the unknown words. The third grade students of 2017 are the 2023 ninth graders, students who are showing deficits in phonemic awareness and phonics. Recognizing these deficits is the catalyst for college reading readiness nine. I appreciate and applaud this effort. However, I have significant concern that the licensed reading teacher promised for this class is simply a balanced literacy trained teacher who does not have the structured literacy knowledge and nuanced skill to teach 15-year-olds the foundational skills that they, that they should have learned in elementary school. Edina special ed students are achieving their annual goals at a rate of 10.19%. In programs that are individualized to student needs, the students are missing their annual goals 90% of the time. Is this success? I'm here to ask Edina Public Schools to address literacy for every single student. The Legislative Action Committee platform does not address literacy. It does list numerous alliances with education organizations that are advocating for continued balanced literacy for all students and minimal progress for special education students. If after six years and the numerous conversations we have all had, you do not understand the issue with teaching children to read via guess and skip balanced literacy, I suggest you tune in to Emily Headford's podcast, Podcast Sold a Story. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Heather Teetz.
Hi, members of the board and Dr. Stanley. So Heather Teetz, electrical engineering major, parent of a ninth and 12th grader who are looking at STEM careers. I was here last month. Very happy to see that we're now offering a non-AP physics class as well, an intro, non-AP intro physics class as well as the AP physics one. I'm going to reiterate kind of how I ended when I ran out of time, scheduling it, right? It says now you, you just have to have earth science, and it can be nine through 12. We now have two classes at intro physics, so people can apply for one or another. You know we're going to have problems with that. We're going to say we can't run this one this time. We can't add another section of that one that time. If we put it in a pathway and say, you know, the pathway is if you, if you're in compacted science, you take it this year. If you're not in compacted science, then an option to take it this year. Another option is to take it this year. We tend to schedule those really well, right? Because more, most kids go through the, the pattern and the pathway, and then they group nicely, and it's easier for the administration to schedule them. We don't want it to be a senior year. We've talked about this this last time. We want them to be able to try physics before senior year. And if you're going to go forward into an engineering degree, you probably want to say, take the physics, AP physics calculus C, the calculus-based one. So, my big thing is, when are we going to schedule it? I'd like to see it on a pathway, so we have a better chance of actually getting kids into the classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to our discussion items, our first discussion item is a 2023 general school board election agreement between the city of Edina and the Edina School District. Just to get everyone on the same page, this agreement was approved by the city, city of Edina in November, and it's a division of labor resolution for the city to run the 2023 school district election for us. This has been reviewed by district legal counsel, and his suggested recommendations are in the document. It's also been reviewed by the governance committee, and none of us had any further changes or recommendations, and are recommending that this, this agreement is approved, which would come back to the board in February. I'll open it up to the rest of the board if there are any comments, questions about this, this agreement. I do want to note for clarification purpose that this is only for the 2023 general school board election. This is not for any further elections, and that there are continuing conversations between the board and the city to talk about more long-term strategic approach to handling school board elections in the future. Do any other governance, or I guess it would be you, Julie, or Dr. Stanley, have any comments about, or Michael, have any comments about this?
The only thing I would just reiterate is that this, this contract moving forward would not change anything for the 2023 election. Things would stay exactly the same with three seats being up in the fall of November, so.
Any other board members have questions, comments? So this will come back for approval next month, and then from a process perspective, I think Stacy, it probably makes sense for you maybe to reach out to the city since there are changes, to see how then they're going to process changes since they've already approved it. Maybe, maybe before it comes back for approval, in case they want to give us back a final document that then they've approved. I'm just not sure exactly what process they'll want to take since we do have two recommended changes. So, great, thank you. Our next discussion item is around student travel, and we have Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. Sage-Hubert here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Ellenberg, board directors, colleagues, and community members. I do want to mention Assistant Principal Jen Carter might also be coming in and joining me. She's juggling multiple things tonight, but was going to try to be here, so just that heads up if she does come. We have some important and exciting travel experiences before you tonight for discussion. There are four international high school travel experiences for 2024, one international middle school travel experience for 2024, and then one international elementary, Normandale specifically, travel experience for 2023, and then another one for Normandale that brings us out to the 2024, so we get on track with that experience, according to board policy with a year ahead of time discussion and approval. The, all of these experiences are either a spring or a summer experience for 2024, except the one I mentioned in 2023. Each travel experience report has first been approved by the administration in the building, and that is in each document in the appendix. In addition, each travel experience report includes the components that are outlined in Policy 538. And the insurance, which is new to policy, is specifically linked in the appendix and as well for each report. Finally, a comprehensive list specifically for the, all of the international travel experiences is included in the appendixes, and then the high school comprehensive list also includes trips that are right here within Minnesota or in the United States. So we wanted to paint a whole picture in terms of what we're offering for our students and make sure that we are having discussions around our experiences and our learning for students that are comprehensive, also thinking through, being aware of sometimes our international trips are clearly a little bit more expensive, so that we're providing a parallel option that is more affordable or attainable for all of our families. All of these reports have been brought to the Teaching and Learning Board Committee and also to December Board Workshop. I'm wondering if we should go through each one for discussion? Okay, so then I will just open it up for questions or feedback for all of them together.
Unless the rest of the board wants her to go through each one. Okay. I'll just let, I don't have any questions, so yes, go ahead.
I do. Thank you so much. And we did talk about all these trips in pretty specific detail at our work session, so that's why we're all like, we don't need to go through them all again. But I just wanted to say thank you for applying the changes to Policy 538 to all of these trips and for that comprehensive approach. I think that the heart of, and the intent of what the board wanted in that policy change really shines in this, in this presentation. So thank you for that.
One clarification question. So for each of these trips, is there opportunity for fundraising efforts for the students?
Yes, each, each one, there are fundraising opportunities. Some are in collaboration even with the educational travel organization that we're working with, and then some are created and designed solely through the high school or the middle school or the elementaries. And so it's really exciting to see the, the collaboration that's happening with our organizations, and really exciting to see the intentionality of our high school staff working together to create opportunities for students for fundraising.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for being mindful of that. That's my only question. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. My question is just an extension of what Director Green had asked. I appreciate the fundraising opportunities. First, I just appreciate all of the opportunities for travel and learning for our students, and that they are at many different scales to accommodate different comfort levels and ability to go outside of our community. So thank you for that. I would like some additional clarification just on the scholarships, that part component that is referenced, in terms of how it's funded, which I'm just not current with, and the capacity. And so if there are specific qualifications that students need to meet in order to access scholarship funds.
That's a great question, Director Neville, and I think what we can do is, I'd like to get more information on that.
Great.
And it might vary from experience to experience, and bring that back when it comes forward for action, so I don't give wrong information.
And it's just general background. I don't necessarily need, you know, per trip, but if there are any, just general.
Absolutely.
How does our district approach the scholarships?
So, thank you. I appreciate it.
And then Director Neville, I wanted to also acknowledge that there has been discussion from the board about the need for further discussion at the board level about if we're going to have this many amazing opportunities, how realistic is, is it to fundraise $5,000 and $6,000? And is there something additional that we need to do to make sure that students can partake in these opportunities, which is something that we haven't had a chance to talk about right now, but it's something that we do need to talk about as a board. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. It, that's actually, that is a longstanding question with a, with a fantastic history in the district. I'm glad that it is still a conversation on the table. Thank you.
Thank you for this report, and as Director Green said, we've seen this before, so it's nice to kind of see it back again. And with some of those changes that we talked about, I noticed in these documents that for the transportation piece, it's always very clear that they will be making connections, either within the United States or whatnot, so that that seems to be, we kind of looked back and said, how can we prevent that from happening? So I really appreciate that piece. And just, I think, to put it out there as much as we can to avoid those, those, if we know ahead of time that we're going to a place where the connecting places may be either cost prohibitive or safety prohibitive, just to always kind of keep that as a guiding principle, that that's something really important to this board.
Thank you for that feedback. Important to be, yeah, on the table.
I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Our next discussion is a policy review for Policies 212, 214, and 217, and I'm going to turn over to our policy chair that worked on this in the past, which is Director Green, not to be confused with our new policy chair, which is Director Neville, which will be taking over next month.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair Ellenberg. Just as a reminder, all of these policies are looked at for clarity, district practice, state and federal statute, and these are, these next three policies are in the 200 cycle, or the 200 series, which is part of our review cycle. So they are not pulled out, they're just on schedule. So the first two, I'm going to group these two together, Policy 212, School Board Member Development, and Policy 214, Out-of-State Travel for School Board Members. Very little changes, if, I think 214 doesn't have any changes at all, so I didn't know if any board members had any questions about either of those policies. Nope. Great. They will come for action then at our next meeting. And then Policy 217, Legislative Involvement. As you recall, board members, we discussed this at a past work session, and we looked to add some clarification based on feedback, and it did go through our legal counsel for review to look at that. So that's what was added in at the end to really clarify legislative involvement as a board member outside of the Legislative Action Committee. So I didn't know if any board members had any questions about that policy. Nope. Excellent. Great. So Policy 217 will come back for action next month in February. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Green. We're going to move on to our action items now. And do I have a motion to approve the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2022?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to invite up Business Director Mert Woodruff to discuss this with the board.
Good evening, members of the board. As part of our work session earlier
As part of our work session earlier tonight, we reviewed the results of the audit with our auditor in great detail. This item is to preserve our policy and comply with it. Just as a matter of order, I'd like to remind the public that Policy 702 states that our minimum fund balance requirement is 6%. We ended the fiscal year 2022 at about 7.4%. We also maintained our adherence to the policy to maintain 1% committed fund balance, which is just about $1 million. So at this time, I would engage you to vote on the recommended action.
Do board members have any questions about the audit? Or comments they'd like to make? The only thing that I would like to highlight, and Mert, maybe you would, I'm sure do a way better job highlighting it, but that the general audit results were a clean financial, a clean opinion on the financial statements. And they found no compliance issues, no legal issues. So for anyone that didn't watch the board work session, which I assume is 99% of the Edina community, if you would just give an overview of.
So the reports in their entirety will be posted to the Business Office website tomorrow morning. The auditor issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion possible, meaning that our financials were fairly and accurately stated and free of material misstatement. We had one audit finding pertaining to accounts payable, which a corrective action plan has been developed for and will be cured during the 2023 fiscal year.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The audited financial statements for fiscal year 2022 are approved. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the Portrait of a Well-Rounded Edina Graduate?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we'll welcome back Teaching and Learning Director D. St. Hubert.
Okay, good evening, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, board members. Our Portrait of a Well-Rounded Edina Graduate has been through a lot of conversation and discussion and work in the 2020 and 23 school year and prior to the 2020-23 school year. It has been discussed specifically on 11-2 and 12-6 at the TNL Board Committee meetings. And it's also been discussed at November, a November work session as well as a December board meeting. So in addition to the board input and collaboration, input from staff, students and alumni has been gathered. And I think it's always important to ground every time we talk about it in that the portrait of a well-rounded Edina graduate is our North Star that articulates the skills and competencies that we will ensure that each and every early learning through 12 Edina student will not only experience, but will have learned as they graduate from Edina. The changes that have been made specifically in this final report, there's just a couple that I want to make sure I point out and highlight that are a tiny bit different from the last reiteration of the draft that was in front of you. We did take the word "healthy" out of the title of the one that we discussed last time at the board meeting, which was the Responsible and Engaged Citizen. And then more clearly articulated the word "healthy" within the description underneath it. So that it was edited to be applies the social emotional skills of self-awareness and self-management to lead a healthy and well-balanced life. The other area that we did a little bit of editing with was under the globally competent individual and the language. And we put, instead of what we had before, we have now engages in multiple opportunities to broaden language, knowledge and application. Again, remembering that this is in a document that will evolve and change as needed and according to what we are focusing on for our students. So with that, I will bring it back to you for any questions or input.
Board members? Have a question?
Director Green? Thank you so much, Director D. St. Hubert. It's really exciting to see this as an extension of our strategic plan and to see the vision and mission of our schools played out here and bringing it down to the student level. So I so appreciate the work and all of the input that's gone from stakeholders and our staff. Can you share a little bit about how this document will be utilized within our system?
Absolutely. I think an exciting piece, the feedback that we got from alumni really connects to the work that we're doing right now with our marquee steam programming and our pathways programming that we're working on at the, again, early learning through 12 vertical alignment level. The feedback was around that they, the input that they had was that they would have liked more internship opportunities, volunteer opportunities to engage in these skills. And so the exciting work is that that will be, that will be integrated and a part of what all of our students were experiencing. So that's one example of this will be where this is in front of us as we do the planning with different stakeholder groups as the, again, our North Star. And so then it will also be used. Another example is when we're doing curriculum reviews. It will always be a part of the curriculum review and a conversation as to as we're doing the curriculum review, how are we ensuring that our students have these experiences throughout? So it will be in front of us at all levels as we work to engage our students to learn these skills and competencies.
Thank you, excellent.
I just also wanted to say thank you for the work that your team has put into this. And one thing that I wanted to highlight, not really a question, but was the student and alumni feedback. I think if community members want to take a look at that, pages 90 of our board packet, just the thing that rose to the top to me is a really shout out to the people who work within our district because this is a phenomenal, very aspirational document. And yet, our students were saying, yes, we felt like we graduated with these things. And we're, as a district, are constantly striving for continuous improvement. But I think it says a lot about the people who work in our district to say, our students were saying, yes, we felt like we were prepared. And I really enjoyed the elementary school feedback, how they weighed in on this. So thank you for engaging that group.
Great, we'll now vote to approve the Portrait of a Well-Rounded Edina Graduate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The Portrait of a Well-Rounded Edina Graduate is approved. Thank you for all your work on this. Oh, you're up here for the next one, I believe. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Secondary New Course and Course Change/Drop Proposals? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The new course and course change drops, changes, drops proposals was brought to TNL Board Committee in November or on November 22nd and to board meeting discussion in December. I just want to highlight a couple of the changes that have happened since that last December meeting with the input and further follow-up. One is the addition of a physics class, the intro level, so that we have that running as well as the AP Physics. And then there were other smaller things, but I think important to point out. There was a video production that was previously under other changes to courses. And that was removed just because upon further exploration of the new standards, the way it's written in the registration book fits and meets the requirements for the new standards. We also had a course drop section that was a global business that was in the, added to the course drop section because it does not run very often, and that's why the drop was suggested and put in. There's also a slight course name change to entrepreneurship with JECCA to simply entrepreneurship. So it's more inclusive to all students with that title. And then finally, there was a course name and description change from entertainment and sports marketing to sports, or, yep, sports marketing to sports management, again, to make sure it's being clear about what the class is. So I know it's a very, there's a lot of information in the report, but I wanted to highlight, again, those are the only changes from the last board discussion about it.
Thank you. Board members? I just wanted to thank you for listening to the feedback about physics and adding that in. I think that's a really important change and will better meet the needs of our students. And then I also just wanted to acknowledge, I really appreciate the team's work on the college reading readiness class for ninth graders. I think that's an important class for, to help those students that are missing that piece that we haven't had in the past. So I wanted to thank your team for having that class available for students for next year. With that, we will now vote to approve the 2023-2024 Secondary New Courses, New Courses and Course Changes/drops. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the 2023-2024 Secondary New Courses and Course Drops and Changes are approved. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the board, excuse me, the Board Legislation Action Committee 2023 Legislative Platform Goals and Plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll now turn it over to Director Green, who's going to discuss this.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. So before you for action is the Legislative Action Committee Platform Priority Goals and Plan. At our, we had discussion last month with our full LAC committee that includes students and also includes community members, where we walked through the platform. And so I'm just going to do a brief overview of what that platform is. So for the 2023 Legislative Platform for Edina Public Schools is one, stabilize education funding; two, strengthen and support special education programs; three, ensure safe, modern school facilities; and increase mental health support for students and staff; and four, increase and diversify teacher workforce. These four priorities, as we mentioned last month, are aligned with where we believe there'll be movement, or potential movement at, during the legislative session. And in no way do these programs cover all the priorities within our district and the work that's going on. I think that's a really important thing to note. So do any board members have questions?
I don't have any questions, I just appreciate the work on this. I think they're very important priorities. And the reality is the priority of funding impacts everything else we're able to do in the district. So without that, so many other things can't become priorities. So I just, I appreciate the focus on that. And I'm, like you said earlier, cautiously optimistic, maybe. We'll get some traction there, but just appreciate the work of your team and the students on your team pulling this together.
Excuse me, I just want to add one more thing, forgive me. As we stayed in the work session this evening, I think it's important to remind the community that the efforts of the LAC are not the only way in which we can make change or make meaningful effect at the legislature. It takes community members who are represented by their representatives at the state legislature and the governor to make that happen. Not only do you have very talented people in Edina who represent you who are already working on this problem, but it's a whole statewide issue and that we all benefit, all students will benefit if the legislature actually takes up the right things and solves for some of the funding challenges that we then have, not on a one-time basis, but on a structural basis, so that it can actually impact us to be able to move forward with all the priorities that we then have. So the Legislative Action Committee is awesome that they're doing that. But they're only one little small part of the effort. And so I invite any and all who are listening to not only get engaged with the LAC, but also get involved to help the state legislature realize what the priorities are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now vote to approve the Board Legislation Action Committee 2023 Legislative Platform Goals and Plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The Board Legislative Action Committee 2023 Legislative Platform Goals and Plan is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the EVP Elementary Update?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have Dr. Randy Smazel, Assistant Superintendent, and Steve Cullison, the EVP Coordinator here. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, members of the board and community. At our meeting last week on Tuesday, we presented a proposal, an administrative recommendation to the board about phasing out elementary EVP, Edina Virtual Pathway. One of the questions that we walked away from the board with is to consider whether there would be a minimal number of students to maintain and continue to keep the sections viable as we go into next year and the year after that. And we do believe we would have a significant number of students next year, but we did some work financially on what that minimal viability, what we believe that would be in working with Mert Woodard. And, Woodard? And in the recommendation, we added that, our recommendation is that we offer a combined section of grades four and five next year. And then after that, we would look at offering grade five as the second year of that phase out. And the minimal viability being 10 students enrolled for either year. 10 students is really kind of the sweet spot for the district financially where we look at the dollars of, the cost of running the program versus the cost of losing the students to another program or another district. And that's where they about equalize. So we did that analysis and added that to the recommendation. And at this time, we don't have any further changes to the resolution. We'll turn it back to the board for questions.
I appreciate you adding that in. Board members, do you have questions, comments? Director Green?
Yep. I feel like I'm talking a lot tonight, I apologize. But I do have, I just have a question. We talked about this last, last month when this came up for discussion. But can you just walk through the movement and placement of the current elementary EVP students? You had referenced that last month on being, some of those students going back to brick and mortar, some being placed in other programs. But I thought that was just really good information for the community and for the board as a reminder.
Of course. And if I can seek clarification, are we speaking about how we came from the almost 100 last year to the reduced number this year? Are we speaking about the movement of what would happen to students in the coming year?
What would happen to students in the coming year?
Thank you. So we looked, the original plan was to phase out EVP in a way which would continue to serve everybody who's already enrolled in it. So next year, we'd offer two through five. What we found, though, is that we'd have a grades two and three class next year with four or five students, which is why we ended up proposing four and five. But what about those four or five students? Well, we have a tuition agreement with a neighboring district. We arrived at that one, it was determined that we wouldn't be offering kindergarten or middle grades, six through eight, this year. And so if those families, either those five families next year, if any of them did not wish to return to in-person, they would be invited to participate in that tuition agreement and move to our neighboring district, which is continuing to offer it as a larger district. In the year following, the fourth graders would graduate to fifth grade. The fifth graders would graduate to the middle grade program. In the event that we had fewer than 10 students in either year, similarly, the options would be in-person or working with our partner district for an online option.
Great, thank you. I just really appreciate the intentionality of those students and giving them support on where they would go with this phasing out. So thank you.
I just wanted to acknowledge, and I know you were told thank you at the last work session, I wanted to acknowledge the work you guys have done, our teachers have done, our administration has done. But I also want to acknowledge what it, not only what it took to create this, but what it takes to reflect and realize, maybe this isn't working. And I want to make sure that we continue to have a culture in our district where we can create and not be afraid that in a year or two that this maybe isn't the right thing for right now, because that's the only way we're going to innovate. And I'm just proud that for the time for COVID, we created an outstanding educational program for our students. We tried to move this beyond COVID. We quickly realized, maybe this isn't the right thing with data and with family input. And now we're, now we're moving and adapting at a very rapid pace. And I just wanted to tell you that I really appreciate your work and your work in acknowledging that and bringing that back to us. And I hope that you, you guys as administrators and teachers feel like you can innovate and try things because I really think that's a key to excellence in our district. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. And last time when some thank yous were shared, I realized on the drive home that I had left out an important thank you. Thank you to the board for its support for Edina Virtual Pathway, both in the past and going forward.
Thank you very much. We will now vote on the recommendation. It says EVA Elementary Update, but the recommendation is to phase out the elementary Edina Virtual Pathway. So we will vote. So we will vote to, well, I guess since we had a motion for the EVP Elementary Update, that's what we're going to vote on. So we'll now vote to approve the EVP Elementary Update. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The EVP Elementary Update is approved. So thank you very much. Now, this one is a mouthful, so hopefully I'll get it right. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed 2022-2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Independent School District 273 and the Service Employees International Union, Local 284 Transportation Employees, Bus Drivers, Bus Mechanics, Route Programmers, Interschool Mail Drivers?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have Sonia Saylor, who is our Director of Human Resources, and Director Mert Woodard. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. So Director Woodard and I are pleased to announce that the Service Employees International Union, Local 284 Transportation Employees have ratified a tentative agreement that is before you, as you know, this evening, for a new two-year collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024. And this is our first contract exclusively with transportation employees. Up until this past summer, actually, up until ratification and approval of this agreement, our transportation employees have been joined with our custodial employees. They've been in one bargaining unit. And last, last summer, they petitioned to divide the group into two different bargaining units. That was approved by the Bureau of Mediation Services in August. And so we now have, once both contracts are ratified and approved, we'll have two separate bargaining units. So this will be our first transportation employees only. I have to say that our negotiation teams worked collaboratively and really resulted in a proposed settlement that both values are the important work that our district's transportation employees do and that they perform each and every day for the students in our school district and also respects the school board's financial parameters. I would like to commend the transportation team for their dedication to this important process. So you have the financial highlights in your packet. I'll just hit a few of those here as well. Step advancement for eligible transportation employees in both years of the agreement. A market adjustment for the non-driver transportation employees. So that is our bus mechanics, route programmers, and interschool mail driver in the first year of the contract, and a two and a one, two and a half percent improvement to the wage scale for all positions in both years of the agreement. A 40 cent increase per hour for our drivers that agree to do substitute assignments. So they, every day, they get a different route depending on who's absent that day. A 45 cent per hour increase for drivers who transport our students with special needs. There is an addition of a wage differential for our bus mechanics for achieving the automotive service excellent certification. We're also going to continue a, the current $250 incentive for recruiting new transportation employees through this new contract term. There, we're actually doing a reduction to the differential for driving multi-district assignments from the current $7 per hour to $5 per hour. However, we did agree to grand person in any drivers that are currently doing those routes. So they will stay at the additional differential of $7 per hour. One additional paid holiday for 12-month employees beginning in the first year of the agreement, and that will recognize Juneteenth. And then no changes were made to the school district's monthly contributions towards health insurance. This two-year total package for this proposed agreement is $7,265,900, and that represents an increase of $250,929. Using the MSBA's costing formula, the two-year percentage increase is 6.2%. This agreement, this tentative agreement is within the authority that the school board provided to our negotiation team. And as a result, we seek your approval for the agreement.
Do board members have questions or comments? Nope. Okay. We will now vote to approve the proposed 2022-2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement between School District 273 and the Service Employees International Union, 284. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The 2022-2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement is approved. Thank you both for your work on this. Appreciate it. Do I have a motion to approve the EPS Academic Calendar proposals for 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We now have Sonia Saylor again, Director of Human Resources, and I believe Dr. Randy Smazel.
Good evening again, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, school board, and community, and staff. We are here before you again to have some conversation about our calendar proposal for the 2425 and 2526 school years. We will not go through that entire report, but just do a brief preamble about some of the conversations since the last time we left the board. So to remind you, the calendar committee has met six times to work through the calendar proposal. And we have discussed calendar concepts and options with the board on September 19, October 25, and at the December 12 board meetings. At the October 25 meeting, the board asked administration to generate a tiered system to help prioritize the scheduling of non-student contact days in the calendar. And that tiered system is included in the body of the report and, and was presented to the board in December. The suggestion at the meeting was to look at moving one student contact day in the spring of each proposed calendar to the middle of the week in order to meet the needs of families whose children utilize specialized services. And that would be accounted for in that tier three model of prioritization that's in the body of that report. At the December 12 meeting, the board asked administration to consider whether an earlier spring break, as suggested by one of the calendars, would negatively impact student sports camp experiences. And we did talk to Troy Stein, our Activities Director, and he indicated that coaches work with the calendar and did not see this as an issue as long as spring break is in the weeks three or four of March or the first week of April. The board asked administration to review student and faculty attendance on a midweek, non-student contact day. And so we utilized the weeks surrounding the Tuesday election day as a midweek day and determined that there was no significant student attendance issue around that midweek day, both for students and for staff. Again, the board has the full report and the proposed days, which we went through in detail at the last meeting. So at this time, we'll turn it back over to the board. And please let us know what questions you have.
Board members? Director Green?
Sure. Thank you so much. And thanks for that additional information from last month. I appreciate all the work that's gone into putting the calendar together. And I, as I've been really going through the calendar, I feel like I wouldn't be doing my due diligence from a governance standpoint if I didn't share some of the concerns that I still have with the calendar. And two of those float in, two of those are in two areas. One is, I know the floating day is off in the middle of the week. I have more of a concern about specialized services. We have Mondays off that connect to the holidays. So I guess a question to push back is how are we servicing those students with those needs on a Monday that would be off? Because one day off in the middle of the week, I don't think corrects the issue that we have, that students wouldn't be getting the services that they need on a Monday or a Friday. So looking at the data from our students, I really think a lot about that continuation and that call out from almost nearly all the students that we asked at the high school, how important it is to keep the continuation throughout the week for learning loss, for learning disruption, I should say, is what they said. The other thing is I, if you look at the spring timeline, especially in spring of 2026 with that floater day, just to give you comparison, and I appreciate the feedback from the Student Athletic and Mr. Stein, I think that is really helpful. But in spring of 2025, the way it's set up right now is that between, between February and spring break, we have two shortened weeks. And then we have seven weeks between spring break and the end of the year. That, to me, feels balanced. If you look at spring of 2026, between February and the spring break, there's four weeks. And within those four weeks, we have two shortened weeks, and one of those shortened weeks is one of the broken weeks. And then we go nine weeks between spring break and the end of the school year, with one of the days being on a Friday. So I just am concerned about that long stretch of time. We, as a board, voted last year to add a student data day to help manage stress and workload for staff and to add that in. And we did that in March, and it was for April, I think 18th was the date that we had approved for the data day. I'm concerned we're going to get ourselves in that same position. If anything, my biggest concern is that spring time of 2026. Nine weeks is a long way to go for students and staff without any kind of break, especially when you look at six to seven weeks or six to seven weeks. So that's where my concern comes from. And it is, it is not a reflection of the work that's gone into this, but I would not be doing my job if I, if I didn't question that. And so I don't think I can support the calendar, especially with the 2026.
May I ask a follow-up question to that concern? Is it the fact that, you know, where you look at spring break, because spring break is coming in the third week in 2016, in March of 2016, starts on the 16th through the 20th? Are you talking about like if that were, somehow if that was shifted down further into closer to April or whatever it is, then you shorten off that nine weeks, so it's closer to seven weeks? That that's, that would that satisfy the concern?
I think shifting a week would, would be helpful, but I also know there's other factors that go into doing that. So I don't think it's my spot to say, here's what I think the solution is.
I appreciate it. I'm just trying to understand when you talk about the nine-week part and your concern around, but I'm just trying to make sure I understand, so I can evaluate that concern. That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, it feels very, it then makes, and also then pushes, it feels very choppy between February for our, and I'm talking mid-February, so the President's Day weekend where there's four days. You go one full week of, you go three days, you go one full week, then you have a broken up week with a day in the middle of the week. Then you go one full week, then you're on spring break. So the continuity of learning there, I have concerns about. I have concerns about that. So, because I think, I think that feels very broken up. I mean, if I look at even this last week when we had a snow day and a half, the kids are really behind, I mean, coming into this week with finals next week at the high school, that was a tough week to not be able to be in class, I think, for students, prepping for end of, you know, all the tests, a lot of tests got moved, papers got moved. So that's where my concern is. So.
Can you just clarify really fast that your, the nine week at the end of the spring, because April 10th is a teacher development day, so do you think it should be a teacher day off?
No, I don't think that. I just think it's, it's, you have that one three-day weekend in that nine-week period when the year before, you have six weeks with one three-day weekend in there.
Okay.
Just the length of the stretch between
I think it's a long stretch.
End of year.
Yep. I do. And I appreciate all the data that's collected, and the board may not agree with me on this at all, and that's, that's okay. I just wanted to voice my concerns.
Do other board members have questions or concerns? Are you guys ready to vote? Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Director Green for sharing the concerns. I appreciate them. I also understand, I, I don't understand the complexities. I know there are complexities. So I hear what Director Green is voicing. They're valid points. And just trying to think of our role tonight, I believe in terms of the timeframe, am I, I'm correct that we do need to approve this, this evening to move forward? There's, there is a, there is harm in postponing that. Is that accurate?
I don't know that postponing it would get us any further along in the process.
It doesn't necessarily correct it. And I also know that by the timing of approving this in January, there are so many other factors that are waiting on this decision this evening. I know it's, I'm not sure that we would arrive at a significantly different result without creating other negative impacts. That's my understanding. So I, I hear the comments. I'm in favor of moving forward this evening unless there's anything that I'm missing in that scenario.
I'll just reiterate that one of the things that the calendar committee wrestled with is, you know, where does, just like many of the other conversations, but where does spring break go? Where's the best place for spring break? And we've historically tried to stay within that third, fourth week of March or the first week of April, trying to identify where does, where's the best place for that to land. And that is a really complex conversation. One of the things that we had conversation about is, you know, are there other holidays, other observances that fall into some of those weeks? And that's where Eid falls in that particular year. And that was part of the conversation of the committee that in the other years, the spring break fell a little bit later, but the proposal from the committee was to align it to Eid to allow our families to have that time to be able to celebrate that and it be over during break, so it wouldn't be a school required day.
The only other thing that I'd add is that I'm not suggesting that we manipulate the calendar, but there is a lot of time between now and the spring of March 2026. And if we get indications of teacher stress level or like if a lot of dynamics changed, just like we acted quickly upon adding a day in March that teachers took in April, or I can't remember exactly. But we do have the capability, if we see, to add a day or shift a day between now and spring of 2026. So I'm comfortable with the calendar, but I also want to acknowledge Julie's concerns. And I think it's also hard to predict out exactly how our district's going to be functioning. And it's a blessing to have the calendar that far out, but it also is complicated to try to figure out exactly everything that's going to be going on in three or four years from now as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Go ahead.
No, thank you for saying that. I would love to then have the holidays included in the priorities, because they're not currently in there. That would have been, that it would be helpful when we look at the calendar for this discussion. So that was not the case. I was literally looking at the data and the priorities that were given. So, thank you.
If I could just add one other comment. And this is a repeat of the comment I made when this was first presented. So it's, I feel heard, this is really for the community. What I appreciate is the calendar committee taking into consideration multiple holidays for multiple faith groups. Thank you for doing that. And what I'm hoping that we can do as a district is continue to have those holidays forward, whether it's on this calendar or another list, so that as other departments put their schedules together and we consider what are our key testing dates, that we're aware as a district of the impact on multiple high holidays for multiple faiths. So thank you.
Okay. We will move on to vote to approve the EPS academic calendar for 2024, 2025, and 2026. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
The EPS academic calendar proposal for 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026 are approved. Thank you both for your work on this. Okay. So I have a motion to approve policies for So I have a motion to approve Policies 107, 203, 205, and 210.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Green? I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. So we have four policies up for action. When these were discussed last month, they were, there was not a lot of feedback or change on any of these, and that would include Policy 107, Public Relations in School Communication; Policy 203, Operation of School Board; Policy 205, Open and Closed Meetings; and Policy 210, Conflict of Interest for School Board Members. Do any Board members have any questions?
No? Excellent. Before we vote, I want to acknowledge the outstanding job that Director Green has done on our Policy Committee. She's really gotten our policies in shape and gotten us on schedule, so thank you very much.
Here, here.
Very much appreciated. Thank you. We will now vote to approve Policies 107, 203, 205, and 210. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policies 107, 203, 205, and 210 are approved. That concludes all our action items. Are there any Board leadership or committee updates? Director Gabler?
I don't have an update necessarily, but I did want to draw the attention to something that was in the consent agenda that I thought was worth mentioning, and that was the gift from the Lake Harriet Lodge, that they had a pancake breakfast and this fall to raise money for our Edina Public Schools' blood glucose monitoring program, and wrote us a check for $880. And I just always, when I come across those things in our board packet, it's just another testament to the great community we live in and the people that are looking at ways to give back to our schools and our students, so I wanted to call that out.
Thank you very much. Director Arum?
I just wanted to note, the Legislative Action Committee has a community breakfast with our representatives this coming Wednesday at 7:30 in Room 348 in the Community Center. All the public is welcome. We'll be discussing our Legislative Action Committee platform, as well as hearing from the representatives and their priorities and how they align with ours. So please come if you can attend.
Thank you, Director Arum. Is there a superintendent update, Dr. Stanley?
I do have a couple of updates. Thank you very much. So first of all, I want to tell the community, if you have not downloaded your Edina app, Edina Public Schools app, please go out and do that. You can now have all the information that you need right in your palm, on your telephone, on your smartphone, and so please go ahead and do that. And then earlier, we talked about the portrait of a well-rounded Edina graduate, and Director DeStain Hubert shared that part of having that in place is part of the vision, to make certain that students are able to experience apprenticeships and internships, and I'm just really delighted to share that through Dr. Leland's work with strategic partnerships, we are on the cusp of having a partnership with Target Corporation around information technology, where our students will be able to have internships right with Target Corporation. And so I really just want to take time to thank Dr. Leland for all of her hard work and really reaching out to major organizations within our community and within, you know, the Twin Cities area, and so really excited about that. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stanley. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.